You're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 20th, 2007. We are here in John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we invite members of the public to join us every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday for our open meetings here of the City Council. The first Friday of the month, we meet in Van Nuys City Hall in our efforts to bring City Council closer to all Angelenos. But otherwise, we are here in City Council. I commend to you the City Council ambassadors we have in the back who can help you navigate any of the ins and outs of the City Council. Feel free to ask them any questions you have. We are always live on Channel 35 and rebroadcast in the evening through LA City View, your city channel. We're also broadcast through our city's homepage, where you can catch live streaming web video of our council meetings at www.lacity.org. And there you can also obtain agendas of today's meetings, any of our City Council meetings, and a schedule of City Council business. Lastly, if you're not close to a TV or a computer, you can always call a council phone, which is a service of the Los Angeles City Council, at 213-621-CITY. And you can listen to our council meetings or our council committee meetings there via telephone. We also invite members of the public to give general public comment every meeting pursuant to the State Brown Act on items that are under our jurisdiction, though not on our agenda. And any items that come before the City Council receive a public hearing, either in committee or in the full council here. So we invite members of the public as well to comment on items that are formally on our agenda that have not yet had a public hearing. We have 10 members present pursuant to council rules, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Grolhan, Weisler, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, West, Weston, Zion, Garcetti, 10 members present and accor, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, I think we have a moment of inspiration that Mr. Rosendahl is going to present to us. So I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rosendahl for a moment of inspiration, and then we will do the pledge after that. Mr. Rosendahl, ready? Okay.
[Unintelligible]
Good morning, colleagues, members of the Los Angeles City Council, the greater Los Angeles area. Are we on Channel 35? Okay, let's get it going. This morning, we are commemorating the death of 29 Los Angeles citizens that have died in the war in Iraq. The war started four years ago today and continues as we stand here and sit here in this council chambers. Three more Americans died this morning in Iraq, and four died last Friday in Iraq. The numbers continue to grow. Over 3,000 Americans have died, and over 650,000 Iraqians have died. On Sunday, I went to Arlington West, which is a cemetery creation in a symbolic sense near the Santa Monica Pier. This was my first public outcome of the Iraqi war. I was first a journalist, and I kept my personal opinions to myself. And the day the war started, I had Dennis Kucinich on my show, who clearly pointed out that the war was based on lies. We now, as Americans and as the world, know there were no weapons of mass destruction. But we continue to put our young men and women in harm's way as I stand here today. In an inspirational sense, I would like to read the 29 names of the Americans from the city of Los Angeles that have passed on in the last four years. And they are Corporal Roberto Abad, Weapons Company Battalion Landing Team, 1st Battalion, 4th Marine Regiment, 11th Marine Expedient Unit, 1st Marine Forces. Died of injuries received from enemy action on August 6, 2004. Sergeant David J. Almazin, 1st Battalion, 36th Infantry Regiment, 1st Brigade Combat Team, 1st Armored Division, Van Nuys, California. Killed when a roadside bomb detonated near his Humvee during combat operations and hit Iraq on August 27, 2006. Sergeant Evan Ashcroft, Company A, 1st Battalion, 327th Infantry Regiment, 1st Brigade, 101st Airborne Division, West Hills, California. Killed when his vehicle was hit by a rocket-propelled grenade during an ambush of military convoys north of Hava in northern Iraq on July 24, 2003. Sergeant Carrillo, a 22-year-old, Combat Logistics Battalion 7, Marine Logistics Group, died while conducting combat operations in Abbar Province, Iraq on January 30, 2007. Lance Corporal Louis Figueroa, 3rd Battalion, 1st Marine Regiment, died as a result of enemy action in Ambar Province, Iraq on November 18, 2004. Staff Sergeant Juan Garcia Araya, Battery 5, 5th Battalion, 5th Air Defense Artillery Regiment, killed when his Bradley Fighting Vehicle was attacked by enemy forces using small arms fire in Iraq on April 30, 2005. Lance Corporal Benjamin Gonzalez, Company E, 2nd Battalion, 4th Marine Regiment, Los Angeles, California. Killed when a car bomb exploded next to his Humvee on a highway in Radadad, Iraq on May 29, 2004. Corporal Jorge Gonzalez, 1st Battalion, 2nd Marine Regiment, Los Angeles. Killed in action near Nazara on March 23, 2003. Lance Corporal Salvador Guerello, 21, 1st Battalion, 7th Marine Regiment. One of the two Marines who died of wounds received while conducting combat operations in Abbar Province on June 9, 2006. Lance Corporal Jose Gutierrez, 22 years old. Killed in combat in southern Iraq on March 21, 2003. Petty Officer 3rd Class John House, who is from Simi Valley, died when his CH-53E Super Stallion helicopter, he was crashed near Aruba in western Iraq on January 26, 2005. Sergeant Edgar J. Lopez, E. Lopez, who was Weapons Company, 1st Battalion, 2nd Marine Regiment from Los Angeles, died due to hostile action in Bava Province, Iraq on August 28, 2004. Lance Corporal Victor R. Hu, 22, Company 1st, 3rd Battalion, 5th Marine from Los Angeles. Died due to enemy action in Ambar Province, Iraq on November 13, 2004. Sergeant 1st Class John W. Marshall, Headquarters Company, 3rd Battalion. Marshall was killed with a rocket-propelled grenade, hit his Humvee. Private Francisco Martinez Flores, a 21-year-old, killed while his unit was conducting convoy operations in the vicinity of Euphrates River on March 25, 2003. Sergeant Trinidad Martinez Luis, 22 years old, died in a vehicle accident in Iraq on November 28, 2004. Lance Corporal Anthony C. Mella, 20 years old, died while conducting combat operations in Abbar Province, Iraq on January 27, 2007. Staff Sergeant Eddie Mayweather, Company C, 588th Engineer Battalion, killed when a roadside bomb hit his vehicle in Iraq on November 23, 2003. Sergeant Milton Manas Jr., 21 years old, died when a roadside bomb detonated near his Bradley Fighting Vehicle in Baghdad on July 24, 2005. PFC Murray, 20 years old, killed when a suicide car bomber attacked his convoy vehicle in Fallujah, Iraq on the 23, 2005. Chief Warrant Officer Christopher Nassan, a 39-year-old, was killed in a vehicle accident that occurred between the northern Iraq cities of Mosul and Deccaw on November 23, 2003. Staff Sergeant Abraham Penadia, 32 years old, killed when his patrol came under sniper fire in Baghdad, Iraq on April 27, 2004. PFC Jeffrey Perez, 24 years old, died from injuries received from hostile action in Abbar Province, Iraq on August 15, 2004. Corporal Carlos Pina, 23 years old, died of wounds sustained from enemy small arms fire during combat operation in Fallujah on June 24, 2005. And PFC Razani, 19 years old, Headquarters Company, 1st Battalion, 56th Infantry Regiment. He died of non-combat-related injuries in Havana, Iraq on August 27, 2004. Lance Corporal Rafael Razana Suarez, 28 years old, killed when a car bomb exploded next to his Humvee on a highway in Ramadi, Iraq on May 29, 2004. Lance Corporal Felipe Senval Flores, 20, one of six Marines killed when his 7-ton truck, he was riding and rolled over in a flash flood near Al-Sadr, Iraq on April 2, 2006. Lance Corporal Dion Whitley, 21 years old, Company A, 1st Battalion, 5th Marine Regiment. One of five Marines killed when his vehicle hit a roadside bomb during combat operations near Ramadi, Iraq on June 15, 2005. And last, and unfortunately probably not the least of the last, the PFC Christopher Young, 20 years old, Company C, 3rd Battalion, 160th Infantry Regiment, California Army, National Guard, from Los Angeles. Died of wounds sustained when a roadside bomb exploded near his vehicle in Swafan, Iraq on March 2, 2007.
Mr. Rosendahl, may I add one name to that as well? Joselito Villanueva, who was the brother of a member of the CD-13 family, a Marine sergeant who was killed by a sniper in 2005.
Thank you, Mr. President, for that. And in inspirational mode, and I will be public comment speakers by others, I'd like to introduce Jeff Key, who's also an Iraq veteran, who has played the bugle with taps more times than he wants to remember for those who have passed on. And with your indulgence, I'd like to give him the opportunity to play taps for us.
I can please ask everybody in council chambers to raise. Thank you. Would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Rosendahl?
Please stand and put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May God rest each of their souls. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zion moves, and Mr. Weston seconds. There's no objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds. There's no objection. Those will be approved as well.
Mr. President, do we should take a public comment at this time?
Yes, let's go to public comment, and then we'll run through the agenda. Actually, why don't we just run through the agenda real quick, and then we'll do public comment?
First item on the agenda is an item notice for public hearing. It's a protest hearing relative to the Silmar property, BID. And council's action would be to open the hearing and hear any protests, close the hearing, and the ballot tabulation is on tomorrow's agenda.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open that hearing and close the public hearing, and we'll continue that till tomorrow?
Yes, Mr. President.
Next item, please.
Next item is item number two, and that's also public hearing item, council, the applicant, excuse me. The recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearing in ord to April 10.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the hearing, continue to the 10th. If there's no objection, so ordered. Next items?
Items three and four are protest hearings relative to street vacations in council districts 11 and 13. And if there are no protests, the city engineers can be instructed to proceed with the vacations.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call those special? If not, let's go ahead. I said, sorry, number five, you said to continue?
Well, that would be just items three and four, and then...
Let's go ahead and open the roll on those, then. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item?
Next item's item five, and the applicant contends to, consents to a continuance to April 11.
Okay, if there's no objection to that continuation, we will continue that till the 11th of April, number five. Next items, please.
Items six and seven are public hearing items, Public Works Committee reports relative to condemnation's acquisition of properties. And I believe there's a card on item six.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and call that special for card? And number seven, anybody wishing to call special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have been held, items eight through 35. There's a request to continue item number eight to April 4.
All right, if there's no objection, let's go ahead and continue item eight till the 4th of April.
And then on the balance of the items nine through 35, the committee report has been submitted on item number 18.
All right. Anybody wishing to call any of those special, Mr. Zion? Nine special for Zion. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, with the committee report circulated on 18, do we have to move it?
Yes, that can be moved by the chair of the committee.
Okay, that is the... Oh, Mr. Cardenas, did you want to move that report? Oh, wait, I think we're gonna... Oh, yeah, that's right. That's not the big hearing. Did you want to move that report? The committee report's been circulated? Okay, I'll second that. And on the balance, if we can go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
That is approved, and those ordinances pass, because we have 12. 22 forthwith, if there's no objection for Mr. Weston. Next items, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have not been held, items 36 through 54. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, we do have some cards, so go ahead and call item 52 special for cards from the public.
And also 36.
And 36, okay. And we will open and close the other public hearings. Mr. Ace, specials?
I'd like to continue items 41 and 42 for 60 days.
60 days, so that would be till the 22nd of May. Okay, there's no objection, we'll continue those two.
And, Mr. President, on items 37 and 40, those are both related items, and the planning department has notified that number 40 should be adopted before item 37. So if council wishes to call those special, so that can be taken in that order...
Okay, let's call those two special, so we can do those in the right order. Mr. Parks?
I'd like to have 10, 24, 25, forthwith, and we have some documents for the record that would...
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll make those forthwith. Other specials, colleagues, between 36 and 54? Are there specials? Ms. Han, did you... Do you have a special? Okay. Always welcome to do so. Seeing none, go ahead and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those are approved. Let's take up 40 next. If nobody wishes to call them special, go ahead and open the roll on 40. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
That's approved. Let's take up 37. Anybody wishing to call that special? Or it's already special, sorry to be heard on it. Seeing none, go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those are approved as well. Next items?
Next item, Mr. President, on the supplemental agenda is item number 55, and the committee report has been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Okay. Colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard on item 55? If not, let's go... Does that need to be removed, the report?
Yes, and the chair of the committee can move that if he wishes.
And that is...
Housing Committee.
Mr. Weston moves the Housing Committee report on that one. I'll second that. Go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have not been held, items 56 through 58. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have a card on 56, so we'll call that special. We'll open and close the public hearings on 57. Anybody wishing to call either of those special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on those two items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those are approved. And next items?
Mr. President, do we should go back to public comment?
Yes, let's take public comment then at this time. Now it's time for public comment on items that are under our jurisdiction but are not formally on the agenda. Members of the public are invited to speak here for two minutes, and we have a clock so folks can watch their time there on the podium to best budget their comments. And our first speaker is Chuck Tenon.
Good morning, council members and President Garcetti, Chuck Tenon. Federal Control Flood Control Act of 1941 resulted from the catastrophic flood into Los Angeles. They killed 115 people and wiped out 7,000 homes and buildings. In the act, it says that all streets should be safe and have sufficient storm drain protection from access, from access flooding. Two people died on West Magnolia Boulevard in 1938, and houses floated away. This street that was built in 1927, rows of affordable apartment buildings will soon be demolished for high-density condos. The street has no storm drain. It's dangerous when it floods. It needs an EIR report. How do we get one if we meet this criteria? Ed Reyes, you want to beautify the L.A. river system. What about the $30 million allocated to this city to upgrade and build additional storm drains to make our streets safe and our communities like our Hazardous Street and Valley Village and District 2 on Magnolia Boulevard? Do you fix first? Do you build first and fix later? Public opinion and public comment is critically important in this city's decision-making process in the early stages because to build the alternatives to make better results in the end, when you speak in one voice, it's impossible not to hear. Working in concert between city council, city planning, housing commission, developers, tenants, and the public makes the priority, become the priority of the agencies in getting the public, getting results. Politics is the art of getting things done and making it happen. On our street in Valley Village, gee, out of anger of developers, gonna tear down buildings and force tenants out, yet they're not ready to develop. They don't even have a track map approval. Why do they allow this to happen? It's something that should be looked at, and... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenon. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog, and then after that will be Chris Matson.
Yes, thank you. First of all, for everybody watching on CD7, it's nice to see former Assemblyman Richard Alarcon, he's here today. He'll be your council member for the next two years. Nice to see you. Now what I'd like to do is address council, because as you know, we need community outreach. We have a host of community problems, and I think we need a billboard campaign, TV campaign, radio, to try to get a focus message out. Here's some things I'm concerned about. I'd like to say, if you could please, city council members, you are the gatekeepers of the community. You're the leaders of the community. The committee looks to you toward leadership. Here's some things I'd be focusing on. First of all, it must be known to all the parents watching, a lot of people like to criticize government, they're not doing enough, you know, with the police and with the schools and things like that. Parents, you cannot leave it up to the government to train your kids how to be decent people. You cannot train your kids how to be good students. I mean, no, it is up to the parents. You cannot leave it to the schools to give your kids dignity, respect, and how to become decent, productive citizens. You must take leadership. We talk about mentoring. Be mentors to your own kids, so that the schools can do their job, not to discipline your kids, but to teach them the skills they need to be productive members of society. We're having a problem in this city where we're not able to produce enough upstanding citizens to fill the positions we need to carry on. So I'd like to say, parents, please take more responsibility, step up. I know that it's tough, you know, when you have other parents that aren't enforcing rules. Parents need to get together and come up with standards. What are they willing to accept regarding language? Times they can stay out? How much time? YouTube, MySpace, these are all things you're gonna have to take... These are all things you're going to have to take responsibility. Step in. You can't allow the schools to fix your kids. If you want to fix the schools, you have to fix the kids yourself. And right now, since I got a little extra time and nobody's paying too much attention, let's talk about Valley Village, y'all. You're building high-density projects, and there doesn't happen to be any infrastructure. The streets are too narrow. You're kicking people out. There's no sewage. This is the worst boondoggle in the city. Valley Village, put an end to it!
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. Chris Mattson is our next speaker. If I can ask folks to try and take their conversations outside or keep their voices down, please, for public comment. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't in the least mean to be disrespectful at all, but I am shocked. I don't even know if it's worth it that I give public comment because council members are not listening.
Many aren't.
My name is Chris Mattson. My husband worked for the LAFD for more than 30 years. One of our sons is on the job. A brother-in-law is a retired captain. We support the mayor's appointment of Douglas Berry as fire chief, and we support Chief Berry's decision to demote Andy Fox and reassign him out of the LAFD Operations Bureau effective April 1st. What we do not understand is why Andy Fox has been designated as the LAFD's litigation risk manager, a new position mandated in January by the mayor to reduce the number of lawsuits filed against the city and reduce payouts of taxpayers' funds to compensate claimants. Councilman Parks. Many of the lawsuits you are facing, in addition to the Tenny Pierce case, suggest that since his appointment to deputy chief in 2004, Andy Fox did not do his job of ensuring that city standards and best practices were implemented and followed. Instead of solving problems, Fox created problems and made existing problems worse. The numerous lawsuits Fox has personally named in also strongly suggest that he increased the city's litigation risk and expense, and that he himself has become a litigation risk and liability to the LAFD and the taxpayers. Maybe the taxpayers are listening. Do you support Andy Fox's designation as the LAFD's new litigation risk manager? For the welfare of the city, LAFD employees, and the community they serve, we ask Chief Berry to reconsider Fox's designation as litigation risk manager. With Fox's track record, it appears remarkably inconsistent to designate him to this role on one hand, on the other hand, to know that he would oversee the very lawsuits in which he is named as a defendant or party to. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Carrion. After that will be Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, and then after that will be Brian Zolin. Good morning.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. In 2005, I came here and I explained to you about a tree that fell on a vehicle, and the city did not take responsibility. I feel the city's becoming hypocrites. We're planting a million trees, the mayor says. Has anybody done an EPA, an EPR stating who's going to service these trees in 10 years when they grow? I talked to Tony Sobreros or somebody from the city who says that the palm trees are being trimmed once every 10 years. Yet the trees are falling, the limbs are falling, the branches are falling, and the city leaves the residents to pick everything up. The city doesn't go out there and pick them up, okay? I called in 2006, January 20th, because I felt the tree in front of my house was dying. As of today, no one's been out there to see that tree. I call that incompetence. The city has a responsibility to go out there when they think, especially when they've been notified. The reason they didn't go out or they didn't pay the claims for the first tree was because they stated they had no prior knowledge of the tree being bad. Well, I've given them prior knowledge of this tree being bad, but yet 13 months later, they still haven't even went out and looked at it. I call that incompetence, and I think somebody should be held accountable. That tree is in Mr. Weezer's district. Mr. Weezer's district has been sitting there for over six weeks, contacting the City Department of Tree Services, Public Works, and haven't barely got a response back a couple of days ago. I call that incompetence when the city department won't even call your office back. It's ridiculous. I have a tree, palm trees, that are falling on top of my vehicle, the branches, and according to Troy, oh, well. That's just the way it's got to be.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins is our next speaker.
Good morning, everyone, and I would like to say Happy New Spring Day. As we set this new audience to check the background check of illegals here in over 20 countries of Africa and Brazil and Middle East. This will also help us to finding our where is the gangbangers and to stop them from breaking the borderline. This is a disgrace for these owners to walk over and disrespect United States of America public people so that the owners will not be responsible for paying any taxes, budget, or insurance on any illegal worker. We must not allow these business owners to hire people like these and pay these illegal people anything they want to of any amount. We must boycott all illegals from being hired by illegal business owners, and now we can get our business in order. I am again Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Our next speaker is Brian Zolin.
Council members, nice to see you again. Thanks for letting me speak today. Regarding the new tenant protections from the Ellis Act evictions, Municipal Code 1295.2 can and should be amended to include the protections for evicted tenants of demolition projects as well as conversions. We also need to have the LAHD recommended higher relocation rates of 9,040 and 17,080 for seniors and disabled passed to reflect the 2007 cost of living. These adjusted increases also need to be recorded prior to the track map so they can stay with the property in case of a change of ownership. Mr. Garcetti, please let me refer quickly to this one item that was on the one development that was on the item. On West Harvard Street, there are 34 market rate units and only three low-income set asides. I would just like to ask the development community, just where do the other 50 or more people go if only three units in that project are set aside as low income?
Thank you very much for your comment. Don Gegen is next. Okay. Mr. Rosenthal, you want to help bring them up?
Mr. President, again, I appreciate this opportunity for a public comment with the men and women behind me. I've asked my colleague Ed Reyes to translate into English. I'm the first person to speak, who is the father of a young man that has died in Iraq. His son's name is Luis A. Figueroa, and holding the poster is his father. Please come to the mic, and Ed will translate for you.
Por favor, su nombre, señor.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Alberto Figo. Hoy muchas gracias a ustedes por la oportunidad de expresarme.
He wants to give thanks to everyone for allowing him to express himself.
Lo que yo voy a hablar depende de mi corazón.
What he's going to speak to comes from his heart.
Gracias y disculpes si los ofendo.
Says, "Thank you, but please..." He wants to apologize if he offends you.
Mi primer mensaje es mi señora que no está aquí.
His first thought is about his wife, who's not with him.
Ella me pregunta qué significa estas manifestaciones, qué se puede obtener de esta reunión aquí con ustedes.
She asks, "What is the purpose of these protests, and what do you achieve from coming to this meeting?"
Si mi hijo ya está muerto.
If my son is already dead.
Ustedes no lo van a regresar en vida.
You will not return him to life.
Pero yo le digo a ella.
But he responds to her.
Esto lo vamos a hacer por los que están allá y los que van a mandar a Iraq ahorita.
He says, "The reason why it's important is for those who are there now in Iraq and for those who are going to be sent to Iraq in the future."
El propósito de nuestra familia es que muchachos jóvenes como mi hijo Luis Alberto Figueroa no vayan a la guerra. No tienen por qué ir.
The purpose of the family is to allow everyone to know that these soldiers should not, do not have to be going to this war. It's not necessary.
Es no necesario. Por qué? Por qué no es necesario? Porque no estamos ganando nada.
It's not necessary because we are winning, we are not winning anything.
Estamos perdiendo vidas.
Or losing lives.
Estamos perdiendo tiempo.
Or losing time.
Estamos perdiendo dinero.
Or losing money.
Tenemos familias ahorita llorando.
We have families today who are crying.
Viendo noticias de que sus hijos están batiendo a muerte con unas personas que no nos interesa a nosotros.
When they watch the news, seeing that their sons are dying and fighting people that we have, we should have no business with.
Por eso es que estoy aquí para que ustedes como comité, por favor, hagan algo por las personas que están a punto de irse para Iraq.
That's why he's here, to speak to you as a council, so that you can do something so that we can stop those who are about to go to Iraq.
Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening.
Aquí realmente tenemos unas fotos desgarradoras que son de jóvenes.
He has pictures here of young men.
De jóvenes que vienen de la guerra, así como él, como ellos, que son bastantes aquí.
He has pictures here of young people, soldiers coming back in their condition.
Ustedes creerían, ustedes sienten cómo sienten la familia, la mamá y papá de estos muchachos. Ustedes creen que sienten.
What he is asking is, can you imagine how the moms and dads feel when they see their sons and daughters come back in this condition? This picture he has soldiers with amputated legs, wearing false limbs, artificial limbs.
Es cosa muy dura para nosotros los padres.
It's something that's very, very hard for the parents.
Cuidar a nuestros hijos en esta situación, no es mi, no es mi, lo que hago yo ahorita porque mi hijo desgraciadamente murió.
To take care of the young men and women in this condition is very hard on the family. But for him, it's something that he's addressing because in his situation, his son is already dead.
Les pido que por favor, si ustedes pueden hacer algo por estas familias, hagámoslo.
He pleads at this council to do something to address this issue.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to read a statement from Susan House, whose son, John D. House, was a corpsman in the Navy assigned to the Marines and was involved in an Operation Phantom Fury in November of 2004. Ms. House gave me this this morning, and she says, "My son was in a non-deployable position in Hawaii when he was sent September 8, 2004, to be attached to the Third Marines, who were already over there. His wife was five months pregnant at the time. Their son, my only grandchild, was born on Christmas Eve, December 24, 2004, while John was in Fallujah. John was killed on January 26, 2005, on his way to his last mission at the Syrian border for the elections. He was killed with 31 of his Marines, as he fondly referred to them. The tragedy has rocked my family so deeply at times, the grief is so overwhelming I can barely breathe. My daughter-in-law, John's wife, Melanie, and my grandson, James Cash House, are the only reasons I am still here today. John spoke to me about the total destruction our forces caused in Fallujah. He experienced horrors that would have scarred him for life had he returned alive." This is from Susan L. House, a Gold Star mother. We have others who would like to make a few comments. Please come up, introduce yourself, and make a couple of comments.
Hello, my name is Marisa Lausmann, and I served in the U.S. Navy from 1988 to 2002, June of 2002. September 11 happened on my watch, basically. And one of the reasons I'm standing here is, as a veteran who's gone through the VA process, it took me basically about a year after I got out to, when I filed the claim, it took them about a year to actually get any, to get to see a doctor in the VA for my back. I got 10%, and at the same time, I applied for depression, but I couldn't prove that I was depressed in the service. A year later, I tried to kill myself. I asked for help through the VA. Now, a couple of years later, I finally have the strength to come out and say, "Look, you know, I was sexually assaulted in the service." And it's going to take me another year. I filed my paperwork about a month ago. It's going to take them another year for it to go through, for them to say, "Yes, this is what happened to you." The problem is that, yes, we're having dead soldiers who are coming back, but what about the living ones who are coming back and do not have the veterans' benefits to go to? When they have to wait months, constantly months. Very fortunate for us in L.A., we have one of the best VA hospitals in the country, but what about the elder soldiers in the middle of the United States who cannot provide that service? I have to wait a year now. This has affected my life. This has affected my marriage. I was one of the top sailors in the Navy, highly awarded, very decorated, but who's going to help me? If it wasn't for my family, I would have been homeless. That is the cost of war. And I'm still here, and I'm still fighting. So I am, I was born in L.A., Mexican-American, and I'm very proud to be an American citizen. But what happens is, I'm not being taken care of. And there's many soldiers in this country that are, that feel the same way. So please help them, you know? We talk about the soldiers that died in Iraq, but do we talk about the soldiers that have come back and killed themselves? I'm a survivor, and I hope you help these people that are coming back so we don't have other survivors like myself. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Don Gegen, and I'm a member of Veterans for Peace. I've been working with the organization now for the past three years. However, my background goes back a lot further than that. I'm a Korean War veteran, and although I know I look real well for a first person that's come back from the Korean War, I have had to endorse some things because my son is disabled. And I want you to listen to this. What happens to the people that come back is that they spend the next 50 years of their life, if it should be that long, trying to access what the country has for itself, whether it be trying to get on an elevator, whether it would be trying to get transportation to and from someplace, whether it's just a simple thing like going to the movies and not having the access. So constantly, these veterans, and those, both male and female, who come back, have to spend the rest of their lives, unlike yourself and unlike myself, constantly trying to work the system, and the system constantly works against it. So you have to think hard. When you send people away, they do come back. Some of them, unfortunately, do not. But the ones that do, you're going to have to put an awful lot of resources into their ability to be a whole person in our society. So I want you to think deep about that, and I want you to think about what we think about when we are at the beach in Santa Monica every Sunday as veterans of peace, setting up the memorial to honor those that have given their lives in Iraq. Our message is simple: We want the boys home, and we want them home now. Thank you.
My name is Michael Lindley, and I'm a Vietnam veteran. One of the things that we do at the memorial is we put out carpets showing the count of the previous week and how many died. So Saturday, we had to put out 20. We woke up to eight more. And this is, this is, this is wrong. We need you to support us. We need you to come out to the memorial. We want you to come and visit the memorial. Come and see what it looks like. See what we're doing out there. And one of the things I want to say is that there are too many going through the front door of our VA systems. And what happens? They have to push them out the back door. And we're having problems with the VA system. Y lo que pasa es que tienen que empujarlos a la puerta trasera y estamos teniendo problemas con los sistemas de VA. Así que necesitamos enfocarnos duro y necesitamos trabajar con nuestros veteranos y ayudarlos porque es un recurso importante que tenemos en este país y soy muy americano, gracias.
Hola, buenos días, soy Jeff Key, soy un veterano de guerra iraquí, gracias al consejo y a usted, señor presidente, y especialmente a los consejeros Zein y Smith. Cuando veo esas estrellas blu en la parte delantera de sus electores, un medio porcentaje de los estadounidenses tiene piel en el juego y entiendo lo que eso significa personalmente porque tengo muchos hermanos y hermanas que todavía están allí. Sabes, tengo un breve minuto y no voy a estar aquí y tratar de deciros que la guerra es mala. Lo que haré es decir, y estoy muy serio sobre esto, es que quiero ponerme a su disposición para que, sabes, en el nivel individual es todavía importante para nosotros si como individuos podemos hacer lo correcto por nuestros hijos que todavía están allí, por nuestra nación, por los iraquíes. Ciertamente, en el nivel de la cumbre de la ciudad podemos. Y quiero hablar contigo sobre, sobre lo mejor. Sabes, cuatro años atrás estaba entrando en Irak y estaba pensando en mi nación, estaba pensando en mi familia en Alabama, pero estaba pensando en mi ciudad de Los Angeles, que ha, que ha sido mi casa ahora por casi diez años y no puedo creer cuanta orgullosa soy de ser ciudadano de esta ciudad. Amo cuando la gente insulta LA porque me da una gran oportunidad. No había, no había entonces y no ahora olvidado que esos aviones estaban dirigidos aquí el 11 de septiembre. Y como Manhattan fue golpeado como un símbolo del centro financiero de Estados Unidos de América fuera de este país, y he visto un poco del mundo ahora, también se considera porque de Hollywood y ese es mi casa. Somos un objetivo para el terrorismo y cada día de la continua ocupación es una herramienta de reclutamiento para terroristas. Fueron ocho años entre los ataques del centro comercial mundial y hay headaches nucleares en la planeta Tierra. Esa es una perspectiva aterradoramente. Quiero hacer lo correcto por los tropas que están allí. El costo de la guerra en dólares excede 400 mil millones de dólares ahora. Si lo quitas al nivel de la ciudad de Los Angeles, cuesta 4.3 millones de dólares. ¿Qué harían ustedes con 4.3 millones de dólares esta mañana? De esos niños de la ciudad intermedia que están reclutados con dinero para la escuela, eso representa 212 becas universitarias, universidades públicas. Gracias.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Frank Doyle, soy miembro de Veterans for Peace, estaba en la Fuerza Aérea de Estados Unidos. Quiero agradecer al consejo Rosendahl por invitarnos aquí hoy. Soy uno de los fundadores de la Memorial Arlington West en Santa Monica y estoy de acuerdo con Jeff, querríamos que todos vinieran y vean lo que es el costo de la guerra. Más de 3000 estadounidenses han muerto en la guerra. Los estimos son más de 600,000 personas iraquíes han muerto en esta guerra, que es una guerra ilegal y moral. Bill pasó el video, espero que tengáis la oportunidad de verlo, se llama Arlington West, es todo sobre lo que hacemos allí. Son testimonios de jóvenes soldados que han estado allí, son testimonios de padres que perdieron a sus hijos en Irak. Es muy emocionante, se está mostrando en las escuelas secundarias de todos los lados de Los Angeles a asambleas. También pasó el libro que publicé llamado Adicto a la Guerra, Por qué Estados Unidos no puede detener el militarismo. Solo quiero decirles aquí, ha sido adoptado por el Distrito de Escuelas de San Francisco como lector adicional para profesores de historia de grado 10 a 12. Es una historia de guerras de Estados Unidos. Nos gustaría tener paz en el mundo y necesitamos que el pueblo americano se despierte y se dé cuenta, solo va a pasar si nosotros lo hacemos pasar, gracias mucho.
Buenos días, Martin Rubin, también conocido como Jerry, activista de paz Rubin, su hermano que caminó en la gran marcha de paz. Quiero agradecer al consejo Rosendahl por traer esto al Cumbre de Los Angeles y el consejo de la ciudad por permitir este memorial, por mantener este memorial a los muertos y lesaltas de la guerra iraquí. Arlington West, que he ido tres años solo para ver qué hacen allí, mientras el número de cruzas aumenta. Es, es, le pido a todos que vayan allí un domingo para obtener el efecto de este gran memorial en la playa. Vamos a cerrar con una canción de algún tiempo atrás, no recuerdo quién la hizo, pero estoy seguro de que todos recuerdan. Guerra, ¿para qué es buena?, absolutamente nada. Gracias.
Hola, soy Susan Hartley, soy ciudadana, bueno, soy residente de Santa Monica, soy comisaria de aeropuerto allí. He estado trabajando en Arlington West durante tres años ahora, no soy veterano, pero soy miembro de Veterans for Peace, es una organización terrificante. Vengan a la playa, ver las cruzas, es para honrar a los muertos y también mostrar el verdadero costo de la guerra. Y cuando ven todas esas cruzas y sabes que todos esos son niños que tuvieron mucho para ofrecer a este país y ellos han muerto por qué, gracias.
En conclusiones, señor presidente, mi colega Greg Smith acaba de sacar una cita de Benjamin Franklin que dice, nunca hubo una buena guerra o una mala paz. Es mi esperanza que este sea el último año en que tengamos este memorial funcionando y que el 20 de marzo de 2008, que estemos fuera de allí. Pero mientras tanto, deberíamos todos rezar por aquellos que se han metido en peligro y rezar que aquellos que están allí ahora vuelvan a casa seguros. Gracias, señor presidente, por permitirnos hacer esto.
Gracias mucho, señor Rosendahl. El siguiente orador es Oscar Johnson. Después de Mr. Johnson estará Greg Fuentes y luego saldrán a Van Nuys para Sharon Brewer. Buenos días.
Buenos días, señor. Mi nombre es Oscar Johnson, todavía me preocupa la dirección de Los Angeles que está yendo, especialmente con el Departamento de Policía de Los Angeles. Parecen ser un pueblo muy ignorado, afilado, castigo. Y leí en el periódico el día de hoy sobre el jefe de la policía que fue a una reunión, sabes, con el pueblo afroamericano, diciendo que tiene interés en la ciudad con el pueblo afroamericano. Y todavía hay 80% de asesinatos en la ciudad de Los Angeles. Pero creo que el jefe de la policía debería ser removido. Y el alcalde de Los Angeles, no le importa a los ciudadanos, hay gente que está muriendo todos los días en Los Angeles, nada de ser matado. Pueblos pobres. Y nuestros jóvenes se han ido en la calle, no tienen educación, no tienen trabajo y todavía el Congreso obtiene millones y millones de dólares cada año para ayudar a los jóvenes, pero no reciben ningún dinero. Y con este acto violento, deberíamos estirar la pena de muerte para actos violentos. Tengo un amigo, su hijo fue asesinado en un acto violento, era un inocente, y hemos fallado en nuestra Constitución, hemos fallado en nuestra Constitución y en nuestro proyecto de ley. Hemos añadido demasiado gobierno en lo que estamos supuestamente a hacer. Y he visto que tenemos que llamar a expertos, algo de la comunidad, para venir a un caso, él no es un testigo, él no debería estar dentro de una sala de juicio diciendo, bueno, he estado experto aquí durante 20 años, sé cómo piensan esta persona, sé cómo piensan esta persona. Con esa situación hemos dejado que la gente inocente vaya libre y hemos convicto, culpable, hemos convicto a la gente inocente y hemos dejado que la gente culpable vaya libre. Y, 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 y hay un número de otras cosas de las que quiero hablar en la ciudad de Los Angeles, en, en, en Broadway y 7ª Ruta, Broadway y 7ª Ruta, en ese Burger King y ese, Burger King y el restaurante de pizza y el restaurante de KFC, tienes comodidad para 100 y, 150 personas para sentarse, pero no tienes reposo para las personas para usar y eso es contra el departamento de salud.
Sí, nuestro próximo orador es Greg Fuentes, gracias mucho. Lo siento, señor, los dos minutos están listos, pero gracias. El señor Fuentes es nuestro próximo orador, gracias, señor Johnson.
Buenos días, miembros del consejo. He compartido con este consejo en varias ocasiones mis preocupaciones respecto a las agencias de informática de tecnología, la incompetencia en el área de regulación de la televisión cable y regulación de video multichanel. Uno de esos áreas, por ejemplo, sería la renovación de la franquicia de la televisión cable que nunca se acabó en la ciudad de Los Angeles, a pesar de que la ciudad gasta cientos de miles de dólares en consultores y miles de horas de mano y tiempo de trabajo de hombre y mujer en el asunto. Otro área es el servicio de cliente que los operadores de cable se supone que deben proporcionar a la ciudad de Los Angeles. En varias ocasiones he proporcionado ejemplos de la información tecnológica no aplicando estas normas. Un tercer área sería simplemente información incorrecta que se da a la ciudad por la agencia de información tecnológica en el área de la televisión cable y video franchising, regulación de video. Una cuarta área sería aquella involucrada en desperdiciar dinero de la ciudad entrando en contratos con consultores externos para lo que los oficiales regulatorios de telecomunicaciones de alto salario deberían estar haciendo. Ahora, finalmente, uno de los áreas que he mencionado en más de una ocasión es las violaciones de la Ley de Recursos Públicos de California. Uno podría pensar que después de que traje esto a la atención del consejo en varias ocasiones, que la ITA corriera su comportamiento en este área. Desafortunadamente, ese no es el caso, así que voy a asistir a la reunión de la ITGS de hoy y tal vez en esta reunión de la ITGS, el señor Simmons, el general general de la ITA, pueda proporcionar una explicación sobre por qué la ITA repitiamente viola la Ley de Recursos Públicos de California. Si no puede hacerlo en esta reunión, espero que lo haga pronto después, gracias mucho.
Gracias, señor Fuentes. Nuestro próximo orador es Sharon Brewer en San Fernando Valley y luego Donna Perman.
Hola, mi nombre es Sharon Brewer, 20 de marzo de 2007, fecha de abril 1 de 2007, evento de Nueva Year Persian, Playa Balboa. El evento está solo 11 días de distancia. Sábado 18 de marzo, dos signos, entrada Woodley, uno signo, entrada Balboa en inglés, Nourou, 1 de abril de 2007. Fri日 16 de marzo, escuché de CD6 en la cumbre de la ciudad, horas 9:00 AM todo el día. Eso es todo lo que sé sobre un evento mayor que podría tener 20,000 personas. ¿Por qué Recreación y Parques y CD6 no están dejando al público, y especialmente a la comunidad, directamente afectada por este evento, los usuarios del parque, saber cómo este evento les afectará? ¿Por qué los hechos sobre el evento de Nueva Year Persian, 1 de abril de 2007, se han mantenido encerrados? Como he dicho antes, el evento de Nueva Year Persian discrimina contra el público non-farsi hablando por no proporcionar toda la información sobre este evento en al menos inglés. Recreación y Parques y CD6 también son culpables de discriminar contra el público non-farsi hablando por no proporcionar información sobre el evento de Nueva Year Persian. El año pasado, 2 de abril de 2006, este promotor fue permitido por Recreación y Parques y CD6 cerrar parte de Playa Balboa al público a menos que pagaran a este promotor cinco dólares por persona para usar un parque público. Haga la matemática, 20,000 personas a cinco dólares por persona, posible 100,000 dólares. Esta posible tarifa de entrada va directamente al promotor. ¿Cuánto tiempo estarán Recreación y Parques y CD6 manteniendo los detalles sobre el evento de Nueva Year Persian, 1 de abril de 2007, 11 días de distancia, un secreto del público? De nuevo, este es el cuarto año para este evento, así que no entiendo por qué hay un problema en obtener la información. Cada año he tenido que tratar de averiguar qué está pasando con el parque y mi peor pensión es que van a cerrarlo completamente al público, gracias.
Gracias, nuestro próximo orador es Donna Perman. En Van Nuys.
Marian Fogler hablará después de mí, ¿verdad?
Sí, ella sigue.
Okay, señor Garcetti en la cumbre de la ciudad, ¿por qué hace difícil para los deshabilitados que vienen a la cumbre de la ciudad? Hay casi no de parque para los deshabilitados para usar en Van Nuys y el elevador no funciona la mitad del tiempo. El gran limpiador lo hace para que la gente no pueda beber agua en la ciudad, sin embargo, la cumbre de la ciudad puede comer y beber. Si es una regla para el público, si es una regla para ustedes, debería ser, quiero decir, regla para el público, debería ser la regla para todos, además de la cumbre de la ciudad. Hay algunos deshabilitados donde la gente tiene que beber agua constantemente, no pueden seguir caminando hacia la fuentena de beber para beber agua. ¿Qué pasa con la gente que tiene pies nerviosos y malas? La gente, por favor, hagan excepciones para los deshabilitados. Señor Garcetti, eres tan hermoso, deberías ser justo. También, por favor, mantén la ciudad de San Fernando Valley pequeña, no queremos gran desarrollo aquí. No necesitamos condominios, necesitamos casas de familia single, el tráfico es terrible, oh, por cierto, Heizumadog. Y hay un tráfico terrible en Wilshire Boulevard. Y, y, lo último es que los administradores no tienen derecho a desplazar a la gente en tal. No estoy segura de ese negocio de la ciudad en el último. Y los deshabilitados y la gente en SSI es difícil encontrar lugares para vivir y si pueden simplemente deshacerse, puede que no tengan un lugar para vivir. Okay, gracias.
Gracias, y veremos esos temas de deshabilitación, apreciamos eso. Marian Fogler es nuestro próximo orador, también en Van Nuys, y luego Ted Hayes aquí en Ciudad Hall.
Buenos días. Presidente Eric Garcetti, como dijo ella, eres muy hermoso y talentoso y puedo ver cómo hablas, incluso has hecho buenas impresiones con otras personas que conozco. Y apreciaría que tuvieras comodidad para mí de poder beber mi botella de agua porque no va a hacer nada. Especialmente, veo, vi el otro día, Ernie, quiero decir, uno de los miembros del consejo bebiendo coca, no recuerdo el nombre, de todos modos. Soy deshabilitada y iba a ser policía hace 20, más de 20 años y, sabes, mi, mi dedicación es asegurar que todo funciona eficientemente y funciona bien y yo, realmente me gustaría participar con ustedes, me gustaría ser justo con todos porque sé que es el gobierno de la gente, para la gente, por la gente. Y, sabes, solo quiero tener justicia, ¿sí? Y ser tratado con amabilidad aquí. Porque me toma mucho llegar aquí y es difícil que trate de llegar aquí y no puedo encontrar parque, es muy difícil para mí, sabes, y necesito realmente, realmente necesito estas comodidades. Okay, el comer y el beber no debería ser un problema. Y, sabes, no quiero tener nuestro bloque de acceso como lo dijo Laura Chick en el periódico, el auditor. Realmente no quiero ver que suceda a nuestra ciudad, que todos no podemos moverse a ninguna parte. Así que por favor pense en ello, porque ustedes tienen hijos también, estoy seguro de que todos los miembros del consejo aquí, Janice Han, usted tiene, tiene un hijo, ha cumplido tres años el otro día. Piense en su futuro aquí en la ciudad de LA, en el condado de Los Angeles, qué clase de vida va a ser. Piense en qué desarrollo estás trayendo y cómo estás desarrollando para quitar servicios centrales de nuestra ciudad que necesitamos para nuestra policía y fuego. Sabes, yo, sabes, yo, estoy tan orgulloso de nuestra gente que está pasando por la guerra porque están protegiéndonos de los deseados, gente que quiere matarnos.
Gracias.
Sabes, así que es por eso que realmente estoy contento de que ese tipo hablara, solo desearía que hubiera sido a un tiempo diferente.
Gracias.
No en un comentario público.
Okay, Ted Hayes es nuestro próximo orador y luego después de eso estará David Riquelme. Señor Hayes.
Buenos días, señor presidente, damas y caballeros, la ciudad de la cumbre de la ciudad, mi nombre es Ted Hayes, activista de la libertad civil y activista constitucional. Este domingo, 25 de marzo, mi organización, la Brigada Atucks, va a liderar una coalición de organizaciones llamada Coalición March 25II y marcha hacia Broadway a la plaza sur de la ciudad de LA. El nombre de esta marcha es la Marcha por los Derechos Civiles, derechos civiles. Porque el año pasado vimos en nuestras calles a cientos de miles de ciudadanos de países extranjeros ilegales en nuestro país marchando, haciendo demandas, diciendo cosas horribles sobre el pueblo americano, rechazando nuestras leyes gubernamentales y teniendo la audacia de levantar sus banderas extranjeras en nuestras facetas. Esto fue un acto de insurrección. Y luego tenemos al alcalde de Los Angeles levantarse y decirle a estas personas que eran right en hacer lo que estaban haciendo y el gobierno federal de Estados Unidos no lo fue. Esas son palabras de insurrección, la misma cosa que causó la guerra civil hace cientos de años. Estamos aquí, vamos a marchar para denunciar el asesinato de la legibilidad civil de los pueblos negros afroamericanos. El 14º amendment y particularmente, cuando estamos diciendo algo que en verdad llamamos ancos. Cientos de miles de millones de personas que no son ciudadanas de este país, reclamando ciudadanía a partir del 14º amendment, que era destinado a los negros de China de la África de Sudán y sus hijos y nadie más. No puedo llevar a mis pueblos pobres, negros, levanten las banderas, hermanos, la bandera americana, este es Estados Unidos de América. Y siempre será hasta que Dios cambie eso. No puedo llevar a estos pueblos masivamente de las calles de Los Angeles, sabes, 80 a 85% de todos los pueblos pobrens en la ciudad de LA son hombres negros, sin embargo, somos el 11% de la población de LA. No puedo llevar a mi gente de estas calles mientras este consejo de la ciudad, la ciudad sagrada, este gobierno gasta mucho tiempo y recursos ayudando a otro país.
Si puedo terminar con ustedes, por favor.
Y eso es lo que la marcha será sobre el 25 de septiembre y te invito a la cumbre de la ciudad, lo siento, 25 de marzo.
Es David Riquelme. Disculpen, señor, tenemos que tratar de ser lo justo posible con el tiempo. David Riquelme es nuestro próximo orador, justo detrás de ti. Gracias, aprecio. Absolutamente, dos minutos por persona, hacemos esto en una... We do this in a very fair way. And then Candido Morris will be next after that.
David Rachele is our next speaker. Another American who'd like to speak, please.
Good afternoon, council members, and President Garcetti. My name is David Rachele, and I'm from Historic Filipino Town. Historic Filipino Town is located on the south side of the 101 freeway, bounded by Glendale Boulevard, Beverly Boulevard, and Hoover. It was a dark day on, on March 5th for Historic Filipino Town when Rampart Village was certified by BONC. A motion to reconsider was filed on March 8th by the Historic Filipino Town Neighborhood Council with no reply or no correspondence, and we are wondering why. Why, how can this happen? How can a community that is only 2.1 miles be cut up into little bits? As many of you know, that in 2002, Historic Filipino Town was designated by a mandate by this, by this chamber, and now Historic Filipino Town, one-third of it, has gone to another neighborhood council. This, this neighborhood council has no borders or no separations. We, all we wanted ever was to have our day in front of a final decision-making body, and we have not been able to get that. On March, March 2nd, Greater Echo Park Elysian has gone into discussions to cede the territory, two-thirds of Historic Filipino Town, to the Historic Filipino Town Neighborhood Council, and we just want more time. We'd like more time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Nice to see you here. Candido Morris is our final speaker for public comment.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. I would, as an American who, family has served this country since the Civil War, and who currently has two nephews, Sergeant Dan Modis and Sergeant Joe Torres, currently serving in Iraq, I want to thank Mr. Rosenthal. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, because you always remember the forgotten ones. You're always, I know you're out of the room, but you did that when we talked about the consolidate plan and the federal dollars that we're losing there, and you asked each and every one of us to speak to our, our leaders in Washington and demand that they do something about this, because we're being affected from our streets all the way to Iraq. So, again, council people, I thank you. And Mr. Rosenthal, thank you very much for remembering those who have been forgotten.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. That closes our general public comment. Adam Quick, first item called special.
First item, Mr. President, is item number six, and that was called Special for Cards From the Public.
Okay. I'd like to invite forward William Harmson at this time for item number six.
Good morning, Mr. President and City Council members. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the properties on whose behalf I have been invited to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution of necessity. I would urge the City Council to avoid the expenditure of millions of dollars unnecessarily. There hasn't been no evaluation performed by the city of maintaining the Motor Transport Division at the current location at the corner of First and John Isso Streets, which would provide the necessary parking and other facilities for the new police headquarters facility, and avoid the expenditure of millions of dollars unnecessarily by the city to condemn properties, both those of my clients and those adjoining my clients' properties in an area the city has already designated for residential development. There is absolutely no benefit to the public, and it, and this proposed condemnation will result in the greatest private harm, not the least private harm. It will dislocate and probably bring about the demise of a business that's operated in this city for million, for many, many years, provided employment to many, many citizens. There is also no public use for a portion of this proposed condemnation. It is not for the Motor Transport Division. I also would suggest to the court, to the City Council, that no one from the city has fulfilled the pre-condemnation requirements under the government code to make an offer of fair compensation to these people by simply evaluating two parcels used as one as if they were separate, which greatly reduces the value of the total. In short, I submit to you that there is no public necessity and no public use for this proposed condemnation, and I urge the City Council to vote no on this resolution.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Jan Perry to speak at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Is Sam Tanaka, if he can come to the middle table, I just wanted him to review the issue of the parcel with the gallery and the small food stand, and the efforts that the city has made, not only to incorporate the participation and input from the neighborhood, because there is some sentiment and desire to try and save the gallery building in particular. So, could you also highlight the cost differential if we did not acquire that parcel and, you know, build on it, and what we've done to reach out to the community and incorporate their desires in terms of having a space?
Good morning, President and council members. Sam Tanaka with the Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering. As far as the Police Administration Building, it's about a four-year process. We've gone through about 27 community meetings to reach where we are today. Currently, the design is complete, and we are in a process of going out to bid for construction of this project. As far as saving St. Higgins Building, it will require us to redesign the project, which will probably delay us about six months, six-to-eight month process. We're looking at 10 percent escalation, probably in the $3, $4 million range as far as we design of this project. As far as we went through an environmental impact process, the environmental impact report was approved by this council, and we're willing to go. The land is required to complement the Police Administration Building. The land is going to be used to provide 800 parking spaces for the Police Administration Building as well.
Mr. Tanaka, if you talk about the retail space, the community space on a street level...
The project along Main Street has approximately 250 feet linear space for retail component, about 3,500 square feet of retail component incorporated into this project.
Would the, activities such as the art gallery be encouraged to relocate in that space?
That's correct.
Okay. And I just wanted to highlight the outreach, and that community input was sought and received, and actually, I think in many ways, made the design much more interesting and attractive.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Lavon is our next speaker.
Mr. Tanaka, thank you for your great years of service. What is planned for the Los Angeles block of Los Angeles Street, Temple Street, Judge Isso Street, and First Street? We know of the new jail facility, we have the communication center. What is planned for that?
On the corner of Judge John Isso and First, we are proposing a public parking structure below grade, subterranean, and a design of a beautiful public plaza on top of that, on that corner.
Great. And what about where Parker Center sits now? Is that building, has it been determined whether it's going to stay or go?
It has not been determined.
Right. Okay, good. All righty, thank you. And the art gallery, which I think is a wonderful thing, are they, how do they, whatever their rent is today would be different in their rent in the future, are you able to compensate them any which way?
I believe we can. That's something, after the construction is complete, that the city would have to address.
Right. And just another technical question, because they did this, when they built the Red Line, they didn't have a subway on the crossing where there was a lot of pedestrian traffic. Everyone who goes to this building, is this on the, oh, it's south of St. Viviana's?
That's correct.
On that side of the street, where the old Union Rescue Mission was?
That's correct.
And so, everyone who goes there will cross Second Street at Main Street?
That's correct.
Is it potentially possible you could at least think to put a diagonal crosswalk there, too, as well?
That's something we have to explore with the LADOT in terms of a diagonal crosswalk.
Would you think it would make sense? You're an engineer, you handle big things.
Certainly, a discussion could be made with the LADOT.
Sam, also, you personally, something's happening to you personally, right? Anything new with you?
I didn't understand that question.
I signed a resolution for you. It was a surprise. Thanks, Bernard. Is it a surprise?
I hope not.
Okay, good. I hope not. And this is one of the great guys of Los Angeles, Sam Tanaka, a great engineer. I may have stepped on it real bad right there. I apologize, Sam, but it was a resolution to salute you for all the work you've done in the past. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Got one other card on item number six here, Russell Brown.
My name is Russell Brown, and president of Downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council. We passed a motion a couple of years ago in opposition to the site of the parking garage, but I do want to echo what Janice said. This has probably been one of the most contentious issues of downtown, and although we didn't feel that this site was an appropriate site for the parking facility, we understand the complexities of all of this and why this site was chosen. Jan is correct, there's been very, very extensive outreach with the community. There's been an extensive process of redesigning this to be as good of a neighborhood as it can be. St. Viviana's Cathedral and, and the condominiums will be right next door. There's a huge residential commercial project scheduled right south of it. Linda Leah Theater and Grand Avenue will all be part of this. So, we look forward to working with the city to continue to make a great neighborhood as possible and have a great design. And thank you for the caucus meeting on Saturday, and I guess I need to say how beautiful you are also. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, this is, I didn't know this was a roast, but we will close public comment and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number nine, and that was called special by Council Member Zine.
Mr. Zine, number nine.
Mr. Zine, number nine. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, you handsome man, you. Well, that's what the two ladies said, so I'm just repeating what I heard from the speakers in the valley.
I'm sorry, your time is up, Mr. Zine.
If I could have the representatives of the police department come forward, from air support and also Commander Garner. Two issues that we have before us, and we want to let the public know that we're concerned about recruitment efforts within the Los Angeles Police Department, and there's two programs. You come to the table, Commander. Table, to table, table. So, what we want to discuss, number one, let's discuss the air support. You're a tactical flight officer.
Yes, sir.
And you fly in a helicopter.
Yes, sir.
Over the city of Los Angeles.
Yes, sir.
And assist the ground units and respond to calls, and there's an issue about additional compensation for the job you do, and some people may have a perception that you're on a sightseeing tour of Los Angeles in the helicopter. And if you can just explain the tactical flight officer operations and what you, what you do as a tactical flight officer compared to what the observers did many, many years ago, when air operations had one helicopter, and now we have the fleet of helicopters. And then we'll talk to Commander Garner about what we'd do to help the recruitment efforts within the police department.
Yes, sir. Since the position of observer became a permanent assignment back in 1974, there's been a constant evolution with new technology in airborne law enforcement and also technical systems that we use on the aircraft today. And since 1974 to 1995, the only change that took place is the name of the position changed in 1995 to tactical flight officer. The 28 of us that are tactical flight officers assigned Air Support Division are involved in approximately 46,000 radio calls a year. It's safe to say that anytime something big or something significant is happening in the city related to law enforcement, we're there and we're very heavily involved. And the city's put out a great commitment to airborne law enforcement and its investment in 16 airframes, and that's also a great expense. And you've taken the opportunity with the CIO's office to finally understand our position. We sincerely appreciate that, and we believe you've assigned appropriate pay with this resolution to fairly compensate so that we can retain and recruit the best officers for that position.
What about the washout rate for tactical flight officers?
We start out with a list of usually around 60 officers. We screen down to who we feel are the best qualified for the position, and you have to have at least five years' recent patrol experience even to apply. And from that, we weed that down to a list of about 15 outstanding candidates who have the most outstanding credentials and experience level, and from that 15, we usually wash out about 70 percent. So, we'll take about three or four people out of that 15 from the original 60 list. So, it's, it's quite a challenging assignment. We do have a very high washout rate, because we can only take the best because of how important the position is.
And you fly rain or shine?
Yes, sir.
Hot or cold?
365 days a year, sir, yes.
And the operations, in addition to the tactical flight operations, there's other special operations that air support's involved in?
Yes, sir. Our primary role is in supporting the 9,200 patrol officers that we have in the city, and that's called astro or air support to regular operations or our patrol function. Beyond that, we also have a surveillance mission where we support our variety of surveillance officers throughout the city.
So, the focus of the air operations has changed from the '70s to where we are now, 2007?
Yes, very significantly, both in the responsibility of the tactical flight officers, how involved they are, their decision-making, and also the advanced systems and technologies that they're using today that weren't available then. And it's important to understand that in using these systems, we're not merely camera operators, we're tacticians, we're street cops, that also have to be camera operators, navigators, communicators, and we're looking for officers that have that total package. So, it's a very unique skill set that we're looking for.
And then if we can keep people in the tactical flight officer seat, then we won't have that continuing turnover where people move up to pilot, and then we're always trying to fill that void. This will stabilize the tactical flight officer position?
Absolutely. It's such a challenging assignment. It takes between 18 and 24 months in order to really get up to speed until you're really proficient, and then we find within just a few years after that, people are looking for a transition, a transition because they want better pay, basically. And this will go a tremendous way to stabilize the position so we can retain and draw the best candidates for the job.
And I know that during committee, I made some comments about my recent situation where I got on the police radio I have in my vehicle for a unit, and it was a happy sight to see air operations overhead until the ground units arrived. So, I know that was a comforting feeling for patrol officers when they're waiting for a unit to respond to assist them, or a civilian waiting for a police car to arrive to have the air operations overhead.
Yes, it's a pleasure to go out there and serve and support all the uniformed officers that we have, and any opportunity we can, we can impact their job to make it safer is what our mission is and what we're all about.
And the CIO's office rode, flew along to make sure that everything was appropriate for the compensation level we're discussing.
Yes, sir. The CIO did an extensive study. They came on ride-alongs with us. They fully investigated our program, looked at a lot of research that we were able to provide them, and we believe that they did a very fair and adequate evaluation of the position.
Thank you. Well-prepared. So, I would ask that we support this. What it's going to do is, the tactical flight officers are currently two-plus-two. What this will do is take them to a two-plus-five, two-plus-five.
Yes, sir.
Which is additional compensation for the activities that they're involved in. The second phase, and this is a motion combined together in this item, not a motion, but the item, number nine, is regarding recruitment efforts. Commander Garner, if you can speak on that, and then we'll take the vote. What we're moving into now to try and boost the ranks of the police department, which I know is your main responsibility, to bring more officers onboard.
Absolutely. Commander Kenneth Garner in charge of personnel group, and let me say that, like Mr. Garcetti, you're not only a pretty face, you also have some substance, too, so...
Well, thank you, Commander. I appreciate that. There will be some deputy chief positions opening soon, I hope.
Any second now.
You're all definitely over time now. Mr. Smith is next, and then Mr....
Did you hear that, Mr. Parks, how the comments were made? He was asleep.
Mr. Smith.
Wait, no, the commander's...
Also...
Go ahead. Go ahead, sorry.
Very quickly, what this initiative provides is a step increase for hiring of military personnel, one step for every two years of service up to step six. And what we're looking at, that's all part of our plan of different initiatives to help jumpstart our recruitment program, and it goes along with Measure M, which was passed two weeks ago, the government buyback. Also, the Police Officer Initiative for Nonprofits is going through the City Council process right now, along with the signing bonus. Our recruitment is definitely taking a big boost, and we're doing a great job with recruitment. Our 2007 numbers year-to-date are 50 percent over last year, so we're actually doing some very good things. We have classes of 70 and 71 this year, so we're doubled what we did last year as far as recruitment in this short period of time.
A question asked by Councilman Labange was the points, the bonus points when you take the written exam. I know that there used to be five points for military credit. Do we still have that military credit?
We don't have any military credit right now for the entrance exam, but that's something that we can definitely take a look at.
But what we're talking about, you can come forward. Don't have to sit there frustrated. Yeah, Scott, you don't have to be frustrated. I want to talk, I want to talk. Go ahead.
Scott DeYoung, Personnel Department. Yes, candidates still receive five points added to their score for military credit.
They do receive the five points?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So what we want to do is obviously recruit people, and military personnel are already trained, so that helps with that. What we'll do with this is they will start at a higher pay scale. So what we're talking about, whatever the pay, $52,000 or $53,000, they'll start at a higher level.
Yes, they will. Start at a higher level and maintain that, and it's an incentive. We get calls every day from military personnel who are shopping police departments to find out what the benefits are, so this is one more benefit in our favor.
I noticed an ad, and I'm trying to find it in today's daily news, a full-page ad by the Correction and Rehabilitation, state of California, that full-page ad, starting at $73,000 a year. Have you seen that ad?
I've seen different ads, I'd have to check those figures just to make sure because that's hard to believe.
I'm trying to find it, it's, because I read it this morning in today's daily news, it's a full-page ad that the Department of Correction and Rehabilitation's taken out. We're not at that level of starting police officers.
No, we're not at that level, and like I said, my information is they're not starting that high, but when you put in different incentives and overtime and everything else, that's where they're getting that number from, but like I said, I'd have to actually see that.
Okay, so it's a bait and switch by the state, but we're honest with the people and tell them what we're going to pay when they start?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Honesty and integrity in the LAPD, I appreciate that. Captain, you got to say something.
And then we'll go to Mr. Smith.
I would like to say that your Air Support Division is like no other airborne law enforcement unit in the world. No one directly supports the field officers the way that the Los Angeles Police Department's Air Support Unit does. They fly over 17,000 hours a year and respond to some 50,000 calls. Interestingly enough, just here in the past two weeks, our folks on Night Watch were directly responsible for apprehending three murder suspects and recovering five guns, which would not have been done without the talents of the tactical flight officers that worked for this division.
And you're very proud as the captain of that operation?
Absolutely.
I will tell you, I was up a couple of times, and you don't only have the leg to fly, but your stomach has to accept that. I mean, I'm flying on a motorcycle on the ground, but flying the helicopter, especially when they're doing those circles, orbits, or whatever you call them, try and throw you out the side, you guys have good stomachs, I commend you for that. One of my colleagues I know flew recently, who speaks very highly of his experience, Councilman Greg Smith, I think, you're up to speak, Greg? Mr. President, that's done for me until we take the vote.
Thank you.
To our handsome council president.
No comment. Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much, and as the maker of the motion on the tactical officers, I just wanted to tell you about a story I heard, and Captain, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but basically when the position started initially, when air support started, you used to pick up P-2 traffic officers to be up in the helicopter with binoculars, and that was the job at the time. Motocops, there are motorcops that were brought in with binoculars to look out for the pilot, and that was the job. And so the pay at that time was P-2 plus two, motor officer entry level. And that's what the pay has been for almost 40 years, and it's never changed. In that time, now, a tactical flight officer, you run the GPS, you run the FLIR, the lights in the system, you run the radio system, which is about 20 channels you monitor, is that correct? Yes, sir. About 20 channels or so? And you give direction to the pilot who just sits there and kind of flies the thing around. So really, if any of you go up in Air Support Division and watch these guys in action, the flight officer's doing 90 percent of the work while the pilot's just steering the boat along, if you will. And I was totally impressed with the professionalism and how you juggle that responsibility was beyond me. Besides looking out of the window and telling your pilot, there's somebody on the right or the left, watch out, we need to be looking at the officers in the field, and I just was incredibly impressed, and that's why I brought the motion in to adjust the pay accordingly, and I think it should even go higher, but this is the first big step in some 40 years, and I think it's an important step. And I just want to personally say to you, as I've said to other officers in Air Support Division, I can think of a number of times down on the streets in that patrol cars as a reserve officer, when you guys saved my fanny. One in particular, when I was going to enter a driveway behind a liquor store with a 211 in progress with a man in a shotgun running right toward where I was going to go, and the airport support guy said, stop where you are, do not enter the driveway. And if we had, we would have been in the middle of a really uncomfortable situation and shooting probably. You guys save officers' lives every day out there, and I respect what you do, and I think this is very appropriate upgrade to that position, and it's way, way overdue. So gentlemen, ladies of council, I hope you'll support this.
Thank you. The city attorney did have an inquiry about your language there when you referred to what they saved of yours, but it's past muster. Mr. Labange is our next speaker.
Thank you, Captain Runden. It's good to see you again. The Centurions played on Saturday again, they won. An old Centurion football. Officer, thank you for what you're doing here. I just want on the recruitment here, just the issue on the points there that you mentioned, is that included in this, or did Mr. Zine just make an additional comment? Mr. Zine, is the issue on military recruitment, is that in this item?
Yes.
Okay, good. So how often are we down at Pendleton or wherever?
We're at Pendleton, 29 Palms, and the other bases. Basically, we own the Southern California bases, we're there almost on a daily basis. We're the only ones that Pendleton will let advertise and have posters on base. We attend their transitional classes for people leaving the military. Last year, we went to Fort Lewis, Washington, and tested up there, tested 70 in Fort Lewis. We're going to expand out this year to Arizona and Nevada, so we do a very good job in military recruiting.
And our housing program is connected to that too, because I know there was, there's always criticism of those who work for the city of Los Angeles, they don't live in the city of Los Angeles, and it's very difficult to buy housing. I know Playa Vista has a program that tries to reach out to its teachers and police officers. I don't know how many are there, but I hear about that. Are we up to school on that? Because that's the biggest challenge people have, how much it costs to live in Los Angeles.
Exactly. I was in the Personnel Committee yesterday, and we're meeting with the housing authority. We're coming up with some innovative ideas to not only look for apartments, but also to look for, to be able to have officers buy within the city without government intervention or government funds. So we've got some pretty innovative things, I've got some good people on my staff, and so I'm very excited about where we're moving in that area.
Okay, and I also want to thank Jeff Key, who was here earlier, he's a veteran who Mr. Rosenthal had start this meeting out, he wants to hear this too, because he'll spread the word about the opportunities that Los Angeles has. And it's not just for, is it just for police officers or all civil servants? I'm looking for a personnel person. Are there five bonus points for someone who wants to be a park maintenance supervisor?
That's correct. Everybody's entitled to that five points.
Across the board, so that's real important. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Rosenthal is next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and golly, Mr. Smith, they saved your butt, you said, which is really good to hear, to have you sitting next to me. Advanced steps for hiring for police officers with military experience is unknown at this time, would be a maximum of $7,400. How'd you get to that figure?
I'll have to bring up Scott DeYoung from the Personnel Department, they're the ones who did the workup on it. We initiated the idea, and they did the workup and the write-up on it. Any idea on that?
Why don't you just sit down and relax in your chair? Good.
As the commander stated, candidates would be eligible for one step for every two years of service up to a maximum of step four on the pay scale. And so they would, that would be the amount that they would, the additional amount they would start at if they got the maximum and started at step four.
Of course, it's terrific, obviously, as a veteran, and knowing what veterans bring to the table is critical for our great city. What kind of recruitment process are you doing to hook in to veterans so that they're aware of this program and they would, you know, apply for it and become part of it?
As the commander mentioned, the recruiters are down at the bases all throughout Southern California, the Southwest. Frequently, we advertise in publications and online, things like Military Jobs, GI.com, things like that, some of the transitional publications. Once this is approved, we're definitely going to start getting that word out. Military is attractive for a lot of reasons, the service ethic, the experience they bring to us, the fact that they're used to relocating, the housing issue was mentioned, this is a pool of candidates that doesn't have a problem coming to Southern California, even if they're originally from somewhere else.
Have we done an outreach to the VA? We have a big VA operation in my district there, there are a lot of vets that use services there. Frankly, there are a lot of vets that are homeless. Can we build it into the VA strategy of rehabilitation of vets and also opportunities for vets?
We have not done anything, but we can certainly look at that, yes.
Could I ask for an amendment on this then, Mr. Zine, that they explore opportunities of relating this to the VA and to veterans, and the two veterans' properties, one in my district, one in Mr. Smith's district, as an outreach program to let them know there's job opportunities? Okay, and, Mr. President, I put in a friendly motion, and was seconded by Mr. Zine, to make an outreach to the Veterans Administration, to our properties in our city, to veterans there that might see opportunities for future employment with them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for doing this, appreciate it.
It'll be accepted as a friendly amendment. Mr. Zine?
Thank you to my wonderful staff, they found the ad. Earn up to $73,000 a year, so if you look into that, maybe we need to increase the compensation for our entry-level officers. Because if they're paying that to.
I'm ready.
Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, you're signing up, huh?
That's the trickle-up theory?
I mean, that's really, you know, a full-page ad, so obviously they need, these are folks who work in the prisons. It's much better working out in the streets, I would say. Anyway, I think I'm the last speaker. I'd just like to urge everyone to support this, to pass this, and good hunting for the recruits, and good flying up in the sky, and Captain, you're doing a fine job. Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Seeing no other council members who wish to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll on this as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it very much. Congratulations. Next item, please.
Item number 36, call special for cards from the public.
Okay, item 36, it's called special for a card. Don't seem to have the card up here. Let me see if we can find it. I have 52 and 56. Madam Clerk, do you have the card?
No, I don't. The sergeant told, let us know that there was a card on.
I'll just announce to the public then, does anybody wish to be heard on item 36 that's in the audience? We don't have any cards up here. Seeing none, then, we will go ahead and close the public comment on 36. Any council members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. All right, next item, please.
Item 52, call special for cards from the public.
Okay, next is item 52. Mr. Zuma Dogg, is he here? Mr. Zuma Dogg, I don't see him, so we'll close the public comment on 52. Anybody from the council wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 56, call special for cards from the public.
All right, that too is for a card from Mr. Zuma Dogg, I don't see him here. Go on once, go on twice. Close the public hearing on that. Council members wishing to be heard on 56. Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved as well, and I think we have a special one. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, council has learned that there will not be enough council members present to constitute a quorum at the meetings that would have been scheduled for next Tuesday, March 27th, and Wednesday, March 28th. Immediate action is required to alert the public that there will not be meetings on March 27th and 28th, and to allow city staff adequate time to notify applicants that their public hearing items will be continued from those dates. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Okay. On the findings, does anybody wish to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Pursuant to Rule 23, that item is now before us, and anybody wishing to be heard on the item? Seeing, yep.
Excuse me, Mr. President, if council adopts this, can this be amended to include an instruction to the city clerk to notify the public hearing items that there will be continued?
Yes, please, let's go ahead and add that. Okay? No council members wish to be heard, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Announcements, colleagues? Now's time for any announcements? Announcement, city council members? Fourth with on the special, if there's no objection. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, members. There will be some series of meetings coming up on high-speed rail, which will all get invitations to. I'm having one tomorrow night at Friendship Auditorium, and the state has discussed this for many, many years and has not been able to move forward on it. The schedule of meetings will be tomorrow night at Friendship Auditorium, which all the public's invited, at 3201 Riverside Drive near Griffith Park. On Thursday, April 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the MTA Boardroom at One Gateway Plaza, Union Station in Los Angeles. On Tuesday, the 10th, Silmar Rec Center, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., that's on 13109 Borden Avenue in Silmar. On the 17th of April, Tuesday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Los Angeles River Center and Gardens at 570 West Avenue 26. And for more information, go to California High Speed Rail, www.ca highspeedrail.california.gov. It's a long overdue process that we should engage in. All communities invited to come learn and listen and contribute. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other announcements? If none, does anybody have adjourned motions for today? Can I please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourned motions? Ask everybody to please rise, Mr. Parks, members of the CLA staff, audience members.
Bill, Greg.
I'd like to recognize first, Councilwoman Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Donna Marie Brunach, who passed away on March 16th at the young age of 57 in San Pedro, where she was a lifetime resident. Donna was a member of the Mission Ebenezer Family Church. She loved gardening, cooking, entertaining. She was a loving daughter, wife, mother, and grandmother. She was survived by her husband, John, her father, Matty Demansich, a very good friend of mine, sons, John and Brian, daughters, Kim and Raina, and seven grandchildren, Joey, Johnny, Sarah, Joshua, Jacob, Timmy, and David. There's going to be a funeral service on Thursday, March 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. at Mission Ebenezer Family Church in Carson. The families ask that if, in lieu of flowers, that donations be made to Trinity Care Hospice at Little Company of Mary's San Pedro Hospital, a scholarship fund at San Pedro Alx Lodge, or the San Pedro Peninsula Cancer Guild. And we will miss Donna. She was a very wonderful member of our community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. LeBange?
Yes, I'd like to ask if we adjourn in memory of Melba Evelyn Croft, who passed away on March first. Melba was the author of more than twenty books, including an early collection in poetry beginning in nineteen thirty-six. Best known for historic works that document and index events of the Owen Sound, the life of Canada in the early days. She is survived by her daughter Beverly Nelson and her son Doug Croft. I ask we adjourn in memory of Melba Evelyn Croft. Additionally, members, I ask we adjourn in memory of a great guy who many of you know, Marsh Holsman. He lived to be eighty years old. He was the special representative for Jerry Snyder and J. H. Snyder Development Company. He worked for more than thirty years and was very involved with the redevelopment of the Miracle Mile and other projects throughout Southern California. Marsh Holsman is survived by his wonderful wife Elaine and their daughter. He passed away on Sunday. And additionally, he was a great fan of USC, and remember seeing him at Tunnel Nine, Row Fifty-four, right on the aisle, so proud of his Trojans. Lastly, members, I ask for you adjourn in memory of Father William Surray, who was a pastor of St. John Bellarmine in Burbank. He was a wonderful priest, died at forty-five years old, unfortunately, from health-related causes. Over four thousand people attended his funeral at the cathedral, and he was much-loved. I saw him on New Year's Day after he saw our float pass on Orange Drive as it made its way up to Colorado, and he was very inspirational. He was a dear friend, formerly at St. Bead's in Lockignada, a wonderful priest, Father William Surray.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nathan Chappell--
We adjourned him.
And did he--
We'll make sure that--
Leona Goldring, too?
If you'd like to add any words--
Like I mentioned about it, I went to the funeral. You know, he died on March eleventh, and he was eighty-five years old. And I know him well from the Little Hoover Commission and the work he did on that, and he was really an incredible leader, and it was an overflow service. There were many people impacted by his life. And I know that we also did Leona Goldring, my colleague here, Jan Perry as well. We went to the funeral. And Roberta Weintraub, who's an inspiration to me, it's her mother, and it's Richard Weintraub's grandmother. And she lived to be ninety-nine and a half years old and had a wonderful life and was an inspiration to everybody. May they both rest in peace. And lastly, again, I wanted to just remember the thirty Los Angeles soldiers that passed away in the last four years in the war in Iraq.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Mr. President. And members, today I rise to adjourn in the memory of a dear friend, an individual that I've known since nineteen eighty-seven, Mr. Chilton Alfons. Chilton, geez. Anyway, Chilton was born February thirteenth, nineteen fifty, so he was a very young man. He was in the Navy, and while in the Navy, he started this organization called Brotherhood of Goodwill, where he, military and civilian personnel, would gather up things to give needy families, veterans during the family, I mean, during the Christmas holidays. But when he came here to Los Angeles, came back to Los Angeles, he had a passion about trying to help young individuals who had taken a wrong turn in their lives and got involved in gangs. So he started the Community Youth Sports and Art Foundation back in nineteen eighty, and he was always hustling money for the agency, as they all do, to try to make it work. And I will never forget that one day, I read in the paper, that Chilton hit the lottery. Now, he didn't hit the big, big California lottery, but he won two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And what he did with his winnings, he invested over eighty thousand dollars of his money back into the agency, which was his love. He retired from the agency in, I believe, nineteen ninety-six, and then he moved on to Africa, where he became a chicken rancher for a couple of years. Lately, though, his health was failing, and for those of you, from time to time, we would see Chilton here at City Hall, and it looked as though, you know, he weighed, you know, fifty or eighty pounds. And he died last Friday, I think, while in Chicago. His services will be this Friday at nine a.m., and it's one of the reasons why I will either be late to council, and I will not make our committee meeting, Mr. Smith. And I'd love to put all members, and Ms. Perry--
Janice's district, Bernard's district, my district, you know, everybody knew him, and he was always out there pushing for those kids.
Do all members on that?
Yeah, okay, that's great. He deserves it.
Yeah, he does. And he's survived by his mother, and you know, it's just, you know, children are supposed to bury their parents. It's not supposed to be the other way, but he's survived by his mother and his daughter and his sister, a brother, and loads of friends and caring individuals. It is too bad. He was a good man, very persistent.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourned motions. First is Marcia DeJesus, passed away March twelfth. Marcia DeJesus was sixty-seven years of age, co-founder of the Los Angeles Chapter of Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and whose teenage son was killed by a drunk driver years after she became involved with the group. They say Marcia DeJesus, who had been undergoing kidney dialysis, died of failure of the kidneys at the West Hills Nursing Home. Her niece, Julie Wallach, told Los Angeles newspaper, Marcia was an enormous driving force in carving out a place for MAAD within Los Angeles County. Tina Pascoe, executive director of the Los Angeles Chapter, worked with Marcia for many years. Marcia helped found the local chapter of Mothers Against Drunk Driving in nineteen eighty-one with Barbara Bloomberg, whose son Seth had been killed by a drunk driver. Marcia was an inspiration, will be greatly missed by all her family and friends, survived by her son Kylie, also sister Linda Fulmer. And I had the privilege and honor of working with Marcia DeJesus and Barbara Bloomberg during my days with the LAPD in Mothers Against Drunk Driving. She was a dynamic woman and did a lot of education in the area of drunk driving. May she rest in peace, Marcia DeJesus. My other adjourned motion is for Irving Kessler, passed away March thirteenth. Excuse me. Irving was born in St. Louis, Missouri, raised in Detroit, Michigan, attended Detroit High School of Commerce. From there, he received one-year academic scholarship, a three-year basketball scholarship to Detroit Institute of Technology, where he received a Bachelor of Science in Accounting.